Good morning. Welcome, welcome to the July 24th, 2025 Land Use Meeting in the South Annex. We have three commissioners here today. We are missing two commissioners, Commissioner Anderson and Commissioner Drake are not here. But we're going to go ahead and move forward because we do have a quorum. I'd like to ask Mr. Kellenberger to start with the invocation and the pledge of allegiance.
Thank you Chairman Johns. Before we get started, a few shopkeeping items. If you've got any electronic devices that make noise, if you cut them off, put them on silent or vibrate, we'd appreciate. If you feel compelled to have a conversation with your neighbor, we'd ask that you take it outside in the hallway. And there may be a difference of opinion in this room today. I ask that everybody respect their fellow residents that are here today to participate in this meeting. So with that said, may the Lord be with you. Let us pray. Dear Lord, thank you for the opportunity to serve the residents of Walton County in the capacity of elected officials and staff employees. Please bestow upon us the virtues of graciousness and humility as we review these land use items and help us to review them with impartially and objectively so that we can make the best decisions for all the residents and people that do business in this county. Just now we pray, amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Yep. Commissioners, we have a couple of different items. We have a legislative item and then a couple of quasi judicial. Kelly Schultz is going to handle the first item.
Good morning Commissioners. I will be representing the Planning Department today. My name is Kelly Schultz, last name is S.C.H.U.L.T.Z. This is the Van Dyke Small Scale Amendment with Rezoning, project number FLU2500024. This project was reviewed by our senior planner, Ayanna Reed, and at this time I'd like to turn the podium over to her.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning.
Okay, item number one, Van Dyke SSA with rezoning. This is a request to approve by ordinance, project number FLU2500024. This is a future land use with rezoning application submitted by Indian Creek LLC on behalf of Linda Van Dyke, requesting to change the current future land use from estate residential to commercial or a lesser category and to change zoning district from estate residential to general commercial or lesser district on 3.78 plus or minus acres. The property is in District Three, located at 6192 South US Highway 331 and is identified by the parcel number in your staff report or your packet. May I please enter the staff report and one public comment that was received this morning into the record?
So entered.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Give me one moment. Okay, so I will say for this project that water and sewer, well, water is available through the city of Dufuniac Springs, sewer is not available. In terms of the transportation review, our reviewer stated that the projected or the development intent may have an adverse impact on the operation of access roadways. Stormwater is not necessarily applicable until the development order application stage. And for the record, the applicant will provide further clarification to you all today on the availability of that sewer infrastructure.
Okay, let's see.
So, yes.
And I would like to add one more thing, that per section 2.02.15G1, general commercial developments must be served by central water and sewer facilities. So I just want you all to keep that in mind as you're thinking about your questions. But besides that, I don't have any other comments from the departments in the staff report. We recommend approval for adoption by ordinance.
Is this property in the February 1 TIF, Marshall area?
Sorry about that. Isn't this property in the the TIF area for 331, the commercial development area?
I'm not sure if it's, I'm not sure if it's under the TIF. Maybe Kelly can speak to that. But I know that it is part of the commercial development along the 331 corridor which lines with, is what's in the comp plan in terms of that commercial development.
And I think this parcel's in the area that was passed several years ago that is the 331 TIF.
I believe it's in the 331 Economic Development Corridor and that was adopted. However, the implementation ordinance in the Land Development Code was never created or adopted. So therefore, what we have done for projects in that planning area is we give them the plan. We ask that they follow the recommendations that are in the plan itself, but we don't have any tool, if you will, to require them to comply with, with the, with the terms of that, of that plan.
Okay.
Thank you.
So as far as I can tell, the planning board had, had no recommendations they approved?
Yes, they recommended approval.
Okay. We have any more discussion from the board?
There was nothing, sorry.
There was no recommendations at all from the planning board or anything?
No.
Nothing? I'm trying to find that on here right now.
It's not?
No.
Motion to approve.
All right, I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak to this? Seeing none?
Oh, you got one.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay. Hi, come on up, I couldn't see you. Please state your name for the record.
Hi, everybody. My name is Kelly Meisner. I just have a small statement and I realize I'm the small man on the totem pole here, so. M.I.S.E.N.E.R. So my name's Kelly Meisner, I'm a long-term Walton County resident. We recently moved from Santa Rosa Beach to Dufuniac Springs where we bought our, our dream property and we found ourselves surrounded by developers trying to kind of change the landscape of our surroundings. I have a couple of statements or concerns. I just want to make sure that my family's voice is on public record today. So my first one would be the shared driveway in the turning lane that would be considered for this drive, for this commercial property. Our driveway borders the north, north part of this parcel. The other one would be although we are a 331, will be a mixed-use conglomerate, this parcel is not near the expansion site for either Dufuniac Springs or Freeport. And so we feel like it's a predominantly rural residential community and introducing commercial zoning would disrupt the established pattern of development and is inconsistent with the neighboring community. My other statement would be that this parcel sits directly on 331, which is a highly trafficked area. It's already pretty intense, you know, traffic and the commercial development anticipation would increase congestion and create additional hazards without adequate infrastructure. Our home borders this property again and we would just like to say that we are not in favor of being surrounded by commercial properties. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Kelly, is all this in the red, that is all commercial that's, that's south of that property?
Yes, ma'am, that's accurate.
And then, and then across the road, across the 331, just north, is that is also commercial?
It looks like to the south of Sherwood Road is general commercial, to the north is neighborhood commercial and everything around it is in the, in that peach color is estate residential.
Okay, okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other comments from the, anyone in the audience? Seeing none? Any more discussion with the board? We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Commissioners, our next items are quasi judicial. As we've transitioned into a new way of reviewing these, I'd like for Matt Richardson to give us a narrative of, of rules and regs and how we're making this transition.
As you're aware, recently the board passed an ordinance switching from the board hearings to quasi judicial matters to go into magistrate. As part of the process, there were some projects that are identified that kind of fell in the middle there between being initiated when the time, when the change was made there. I think there's approximately, staff can correct me wrong, I think there's approximately three projects that have been identified. I think two of them are actually on today for QJ. The one, projects that have been submitted since the passage will automatically go to the magistrate. Well, these particular projects, staff had a discussion about this and they decided to give the applicants an option. They can make a request to the board to either move to magistrate or just stay with the board. It's in the discretion to make that request, it's in your discretion where you wish to grant it or not there. So the board can elect to allow it to go to these projects, go to magistrate and it'll be heard there. My only recommendation, if the board likes to do that on these two projects that are on today, is that there are people here to, that came this morning to provide a public comment, that they'd be given an opportunity to do so and that can be transmitted onto the, onto the magistrate or the administrative law judge if that decision is made there. The staff and the applicants, of course, they will not, if you sent to the quasi judicial, send on to the administrative law judge, they will not do a presentation today, they'll do that before the judge and that. But we thought, discussed with the staff, thought that may be the best way of doing because the people who came today, they will have to come back for the judging and have their comments transmitted. But for these two projects, it's one of the board's discretion, aside where they wish to send to magistrate or not.
Thank you, thank you very much. Did everyone hear that and understand that? Okay, the first project up is the Echelon, but I ask, is there anyone in the audience that is here to speak on that project? No? Since there's not anyone here to speak on that, and I think that they would like to be able to speak to that, and I think there was some confusion about the process as far as whether it was automatically going to go to DOA or whether it was going to be heard by the board, it's the board's decision on these particular projects whether it's going to go to DOA or whether we're going to hear it. But since there's no one here on that particular one, I would like to recommend that we move this to the next meeting so that they have an opportunity to be heard.
Motion, Matt.
Let me make sure I understand what we're doing. So, is that, I mean, is the applicant agreeable to put it off another month?
That's part of the issue there. I think they're understanding that it may potentially have been automatically going to the, the administrative law judge. I don't think anybody is there today to specifically speak on that issue regarding it.
I'll, I'll second the motion because, I mean, neither side's here, we need to give them the opportunity. Need to back it up to let them have a shot.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Anyone here would like to speak to that? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, that'll be moved to the next land use meeting. That brings us to the East Nursery Road subdivision. And staff, who's got that? Kelly?
Good morning. I'll give a quick introduction. This is East Nursery Road subdivision. It is major development order, MHA2500036. Project was reviewed by Tim Brown. You'll see on the agenda that this was a request to approve by final order. Please forgive our mistake here, this, we're getting used to this process. The applicant has given a formal request to go to the ALJ or special magistrate. So the agenda should have read, instead of request to approve by final order, request to send to the special magistrate or administrative law judge. With that said, Mr. Brown is here and I will be glad to turn the podium over to him to give you a presentation on the project.
Thank you.
And if, before they start doing their presentation, I think the real question needs to be decided, do you?
Do we want to hear it or do we want to send it to the judge?
Mr. Tatum, is it correct that's your applicant's request to move it to administrative law judge?
That's correct. If you recall, we were here last month on this project and we asked for a continuance because Mr. Drake was not here. Now we're in a situation where we don't have Mr. Drake or Mr. Anderson, but, so, but our, after that hearing happened, we received an email from the planning department that said, "We're referring you to the administrative law judge." So we went through, up until last week or the week before, end of the week before, believing that we were going to the administrative law judge. Got a phone call from Mr. Atkinson saying, "Well, since the county commissioners continued you, you need to go back to them and ask them for permission to go to the administrative law judge." So that's why we're here today, is to request that. We feel like, especially given now that there's absence of two, two commissioners, that the only fair thing is to allow us to go present the administrative law judge. We have no problem with the public speaking today. We have a court reporter here, she can take it down. I will pledge that I will get a copy of that transcript and put it in the record for the administrative law judge to review. I also understand that they are going to have, the public will have the opportunity to speak at the ALJ. So there will still be another bite at the apple for them. And finally, just to bring you up to speed, you may, may or may not know this, myself and Ms. Davis have already had what's called a pre-hearing conference with the administrative law judge on this project. So she's already ready, when I say she, that's the administrative law judge, she's ready to, to push this forward and get us a date, we just needed to get through today.
That was a little premature because it needed to be a decision made by this board on just these, I believe there's three, possibly four items that need to, that are just kind of in that limbo stage. So if, if the board decides to let it go to DOA today, then I do want to allow people to speak to it so they can be heard because this is the second time that they've come to this meeting.
Absolutely. And I respect that and I respect Mr. Atkinson's opinion that because you continue it, I don't think that is the proper way to handle it. I just do request, especially since even if this wasn't an issue with two commissioners out, I'd be requesting a continuance for certain anyway, based on that. So that's.
You don't trust us?
It's not that, it's just, when you need three votes, well, I guess in this case we need two, but you understand, it's the, the odds.
Right, I understand.
I know you were. Any, any questions for me?
Well, I just want to, so, we're going to let the folks speak on this if we decide to send it to the magistrate.
Either way, either way, they, the folks will be able to speak.
Just for the record, once it goes to the magistrate, they'll have another opportunity to speak, correct?
Yes.
Then whatever that decision is made, it's coming back to the board for the final. So will that be another opportunity for them to speak?
No.
Or is it?
As, as is currently written, the, the opportunity to provide public comment would be actually at the planning commission and before the magistrate, when contemporaries, when the actual presentation is made with the staff and the applicant.
So the final judgment would be no public speaking on the subject, we would just vote?
It'd be, it's great, it'd be approval of the findings before the magistrate.
Okay.
It'd really be your function would be disapproving it or disapproving it and putting on the record why you disapproved of it.
You better have a good reason to go against the judge.
Yes, the, the actual ordinance speaks to that and what would need to be put on the record regarding that because this, the magistrate's going to make finding of facts and issue a judgment based office. So you're going to be able to establish why, because these are different legislative and since these are quasi judicial hearings, there'd need to be a basis on the record why you're not agreeing with the magistrate's decision or you're sending it back to the magistrate. But yeah, if this continued on to it, there would not be any reason for staff or the applicant to do a presentation today, but I will swear in the audience and they'll have an opportunity to provide their comment today regarding it, or if they wish to wait until the actual hearing, they could do that as well there. But since people are here today, we want to give them the opportunity to, they don't have to come back on another date, but we'll make sure that their testimony is transmitted to the judge for the consideration.
So what we need then is we need a motion to either send it to DOA, the administrative judge, and then we will allow the people to talk, or I believe if we decide we want to hear it, I believe that Mr. Tatum is going to ask for it to be moved to another meeting because of the fact we're short on commissioners. So.
That's correct.
So we need a, I need a motion.
But to be, to be clear, no, no disrespect to Mr. Tatum, but we don't have to grant contingencies.
True, very true, very true. Totally up to, up to you. So I need one of you to give me a motion.
Well, the, the only thing I'm looking at is if we continue, I'm not, because of the precedents, I mean, I don't, if we continue it again, we're going to have another chance, we're going to have two more commissioners missing, or at least one, and then you're going to go back to the two-two issue to continue it again. I would, I would be inclined to at least push it out to give the two commissioners another chance to, to come to this meeting to hear this. If they don't, then, you know, let's make that decision at that time. I mean, there's three of us up there and there's, what, two districts not represented up, up here, so.
Well, the, the other option is for DOA to, to let the magistrate do it, but still allow the people to talk today so all their input will go to the magistrate.
But then you have two districts that don't have a say-so in that today.
Well, we're not going to have a say-so in it either.
Well, I mean, in a decision to move it to DOA or to, to whatever, whatever decision we make today.
There's just three of us to make that decision.
I, I know. And, and I hate that there's two districts not being represented up here today, so.
Well, I, I know that one of them would be here if he could, but, you know, due to personal reasons, he's unable to be here, I'm not sure about the other, so.
But there's a, there's a, there's a chance, a good chance, that we could go for the third month and not have five here. And now, now, I mean, we just keep pushing it. So I think it would be better to give it, just go ahead and give it to the judge and be done with it, rather than, I mean, at some point, we're messing with people's due process on both sides. And so let the judge handle it.
Is that a motion?
That's a motion.
I'll go ahead and second it.
We have a motion and a second to move this to the magistrate. However, you will all have an opportunity, who wants to speak will have, have an opportunity to talk, okay? So we have a motion and a second to move it to the magistrate. Is there anyone in the audience that wants to speak just to that topic? Yes, ma'am? In the back, please come up to the front. And this is just on moving it to the magistrate?
I have a question.
Okay.
My name is Michelle Robeson, R.O.B.E.S.O.N. I know this is a new process, but my question is if you do decide to send it to the magistrate, is there, I know here we can speak as citizens. In front of the magistrate, is there something extra that we have to do to be able to speak or prove to be able to speak?
Well, your information here will go to the magistrate. So whatever anyone says here, that will be provided to the magistrate. I believe you will also have an opportunity, I'm not 100% sure, if you'll have an opportunity to speak before the magistrate, that that, that.
From what I've read, there's some extra steps that have to be proven or you have to go through to be able to speak. So it's not necessarily true that we'll be able to speak there.
And there are really two different roles, and staff can correct me wrong, there's the same as today in quasi judicial hearings, there's actually two different roles that people potentially take. It could be, what you're saying, additional steps would be classified as an interest of the party. As someone whose interest is, is impacted greater than just kind of general public by a particular project, an interest of the party, if they ask for or receive that designation, it essentially makes them the same as the staff and the applicant and their ability to get up, call witnesses, ask questions of the witnesses that came up, cross-examine them. So that's an interest of the party classification. You also have just general public comment, people who wish to provide public, provide comment on a particular project. Those are two, and staff can correct me, are you going to try to preserve those two for the judge?
Brooke Davis, I'm a half of the planning department. So at this point, the, the way the ordinance is written is really that general public comment that there's no interest in how the decision's made. All that's going to be done at planning commission. So that's the time and place for that to happen. So you don't have to demonstrate that you have any interest in it, you can just say, "I don't like this" or "I just love it," so it's going to make my dog happy. That, that's the time for that is at planning commission. All of that will be seen by DOA in making their decision. So we're working with some details right now. We have a conference call scheduled on August 5th with DOA to talk about how we're going to transmit those kind of things to DOA. So right now, the way it works is you would submit all of your filings to them and then they would review it. What we're working on is getting them a login for our system so that way they can, they can log in and they can see what we see on our end.
And those procedures are still being worked out, though?
Right, right.
Okay, so there's something that we're going to have to get established for the judge there regarding that.
Right.
But there's still going to be opportunity for public comment and interest of the parties in the process.
Right. And to be clear, there's, there's nine of these projects that we identified. What Mr. Tatum was referring to as far as the email that he received, you know, that he, he has the option to go to DOA, we emailed all nine of those projects that had submitted applications prior to the passing of the ordinance because in, in the feelings in talking with Mr. Atkinson as well, there was, there was a question of potential equitability because when they submitted their, their applications, their expectation at that point would have been to come to the board of county commissioners. So it really, the, it was given to all nine of these applicants as an option instead of, because the way the ordinance was written was saying it's mandatory, you have to go to DOA, but because of those applications coming in beforehand, then the decision was made to allow them the opportunity, if they wanted to exercise their opportunity to come to the county commissioners, then they were allowed to do so.
Right, thank you. Yes.
Brooke, for clarification for Ms. Robeson's question, is there anything special that a person would have to do to speak before the magistrate?
So at this point, they're going to have to demonstrate some sort of interest in the project.
How do they do that?
So they would have to say, you know, So they would have to say, you know, they're, they're a neighbor to the project, that they're in some form or fashion to provide some sort of substantial credible evidence that, that they have an interest in, in something to do with the project, whether it be the setbacks, the, the, just the location of the project.
Okay, when would they do that?
They would do that when they approach.
The podium?
Right, right. So the, the expectation in, so we, to be clear, Commissioner Johns, the, the conference that we had with Judge Van White last week, um, we did not set a hearing date, because with this county commission meeting coming up, it was just, we had submitted the case so that way we could abide by any potential time periods of, as Commissioner Gladwell discussed with due process concerns on the applicant's behalf, so we did submit the case so that way, if it was decided that this did go to DOA, that the submission was there and the judge was at least beginning preparations of, you know, setting a hearing date and things like that, so the, we're going to have another conference call to set any potential hearing date for the case, but we, we did discuss at that point, um, some options of having a set date, um, and then addressing public comment, would most likely, the, those would happen at the beginning of the hearing is how Judge Van White prefers her hearings to go.
Okay, so a person would approach the podium, um, Mrs. So-and-so or Mr. So-and-so, I have an interest in this because I live adjacent to it, how is it determined that there are an interested party?
That's gonna be up for the judge's decision, um, whether they've met the substantial competent evidence, um, I, I, from, from the expectation that, that I've received from DOA, the, the threshold is not going to be a substantial bar, it's, it's gonna be a minimal bar for, for people to demonstrate that.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Any other questions for me?
Thank you very much, um, no, we, we do have a motion and a second on the floor.
Can I add something real fast, I'm sorry, I will commit to, on this particular project, not objecting to any public comments at the DOA hearing, if, if we can get there, just on this one, though.
Okay.
That's not only in my, that's going forward, okay.
Okay, ma'am, this is only for moving it to, okay, come on up. Please state your name.
Jacqueline Puglia, oh, Jacqueline Puglia, 1103 East North Street. Um, just as far as continuances and, um, thank you, uh, every time it's rescheduled, I mean, I know, um.
Steve.
They have a lawyer, um, there was always a lawyer representing the other side, they're paid, that's part of their job, and scheduling into their, into their business day, um, when schedules get changed, not a big deal, for a community member to show up is a very big deal, for us to get community involvement is a very big deal, and to not, you know, when we come, we take whoever's here.
Right, we, we're going to let you all speak, and, and your information will go, if it's going to go to the magistrate, your information will go to the magistrate, so anything that you say today will be moved to the magistrate, because we already have a motion and a second on the floor to move it?
I understand that and appreciate it.
Thank you.
I think reading it, because I've read all the letters and the transcripts and all that, is a little different than seeing people speak.
Right.
And hearing people speak.
Right, well, that, I believe that they were explaining too, that if you wanted to speak to that judge, that might be a possibility, but I don't want to promise that because this is a brand-new process, and I don't want to tell you that you're guaranteed that you're gonna speak in front of the person, because I honestly do not know.
We're just one more meeting to come to, and we've already been to several.
I understand, I know, unfortunately.
So that's, that's just, if you, you know, said, did we want to speak to this?
Yes, thank you, yes.
Ma'am, ma'am?
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 Oh, I just want you to understand, uh, at least, I understand what you're saying, and it was my intent today that either we send it to the judge or we hear it today. I, I would not vote to approve a continuance passed today, because I understand people have shown up multiple times, but, um, since the applicant has requested to go to the judge and that's his right, um, then I, that's probably the most fair thing to do, but, um, as far as I'm concerned, we're gonna settle it one way or another today.
Thank you. Is that Margaret? I can't see that far, come on up.
How are you?
Good, thank you.
Thank you so much, my name is Margaret Landry, L-A-N-D-R-Y, I was told, I was on that conference call with Stephen, and, um, we didn't get through and talked about it later, but I was told this would be heard today by our commissioners, and that's what we expect.
I don't know who told you that, because that decision is made by these commissioners and I have a say.
I know, I'm just telling you, I was heard, I was told that, um, on entergov, if public comment goes to the magistrate, there is no section on entergov that has public comment, and I've talked to planning about that before, there needs to be a section that has public comment that follows a, um, a development. They had a choice earlier to go to the magistrate and they went before the BCC, they started this process, I feel like, and I don't want to ill intentions on anyone, but I think part of this is to silence the public and silence the community. We're gonna have to, as, as you know, have a lawyer, whether anybody will admit that or not, the community will for these hearings, um, I just, I don't think it's fair, I think it should be heard today, and I don't think, as Mr. Commissioner Gladwell said, I don't think it should be continued another time, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay.
Can I clarify something, Ms. Landry just said, um, we were given the option the week after we were before y'all the last time, that was, it was not mentioned to us that there was an option, I think it was just the, the growing pains, trying to figure out what this situation's like, nobody mentioned it to us, had we known that that was what we could have done, we would have requested it right from the bat, so I just wanted to clarify that remark.
Thank you. Okay, any other comment from the board? We have a motion and a second, pardon me?
Just a question.
Um, after, after the, Kelly, can you come up and tell us why, um, the planning board voted the way they did, do you have those comments?
I actually was not at that planning commission meeting, Tim, would you, would it be okay if Tim comes up?
Okay, that'd be great, that'd be great, thank you. Hi, Tim.
Good morning, Tim Brown with Planning Development, I think their two main items was compatibility and traffic, that was what they mostly concentrated on, I mean, there was other issues brought up and other issues discussed, but I think it really comes down to those two elements, compatibility and traffic.
Okay, thank you, thank you very much, any other question? Okay, anybody, you're good with your motion and you're good with your second? Okay, there's a motion and a second on the floor to move this to DOA, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes, this will be heard by the magistrate, however, we will talk to you all, we will listen to you, so is there, I, I was told there's one person that wants to speak for several, on behalf of several people, is there someone out there that wants to speak on behalf of several of you? No? Okay, who wants to speak first?
Doesn't anybody that speaks, wants to speak, they need to be sworn, don't they?
Oh, yes, go ahead and do that, he's gonna swear everyone in.
Anybody who wishes to provide testimony as public comment in this matter, please stand and raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give today is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Okay, I'm gonna ask that you stay within your three minutes, please, and also, um, if you've got something different from someone else, that would be beneficial, um, so please keep that in mind.
One other statement from me again, um, I'm gonna go return and sit back in the audience so that I'm not tempted to hop up and try to rebut something somebody says, but if you have questions for me, just let me know.
Thank you.
Yeah, I follow the record, Mr. Tatum, I'm saying you wish to just reserve your right, potentially raise objections before the magistrate regarding any testimony?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Thank you, okay, who wants to go first? Yes, sir.
Thank you, my name is Robert Brothers, B-R-O-T-H-E-R-S, um, I live on Nellie Drive, a stone's throw from the north end where it intersects Nursery Road, so I'm literally right around the corner from this development, and there's already a serious traffic issue on both ends of Chat Holly Road, depending on time of day, I'm sure you're aware of that, we have the clown show, to put it politely, on the road beside the US Gold Gymnasium on the south end of Nellie, Indian woman's the same way, the, the overdevelopment is just too much for the roadway system we have, we've got a new light at Goldsby Road because of the same problem, nobody could get on the highway, now we all sit on the highway at the light at Goldsby Road with our foot on the brake, idling for a hundred car lineup, and they're putting in a light now at Church Street, same problem, same thing on, uh, trying to come north from Seagrove Beach or, uh, Grayton Beach onto 98, there's just too many people in these little areas for the roadway system we have, and, and to say, well, how much can the roadway handle, well, Highway 98 could probably flow a million cars a day if nobody had to stop for anything, but now we sit in a line, in a long skinny parking lot, and we go like this to get to work, and then we turn around and we go like that to get home, and I just wish the overdevelopment could have the brakes put on somehow, to some degree, I bought my property in 1985, and what then we called Hogtown Bayou area was literally the boon docks, if you lived in Fort Walton or Destin, that was the boon docks, Nellie Drive didn't even connect to Nursery Road, it dead-ended in the woods a quarter mile south of Nursery Road, so I've seen a lot happen in this forty years, and it's, uh, beyond disappointing and discouraging, it's frankly, to me, it's disgusting, and, um, it, it's, you people, maybe the magistrate, whatever that is, are the only ones that can really change it, we can come here, we can rant and rave, we can ramble on, we can beg and plead, but you people are the ones that either do the right thing or maybe not the right thing for the people that live here and have lived here for years and years.
Thank you very much.
Now, thank you for hearing me.
Thank you, I don't disagree with anything that you said, um, absolutely correct, um, who is, who would like to speak next? Yes, sir. Good morning.
My name is Andre Raymond, that's A-N-D-R-E, last name is Raymond, R-A-Y-M-O-N-D. Again, my name is Andre Raymond and I live at 44 North Garden Lane Drive, San Rosa Beach. I've lived on this property since 1968, which is adjacent to the east side of the proposed development and borders the north side of the Kellogg Sanctuary. The sanctuary was donated to the county as a preserve for the community to enjoy. Triton Homes wants to develop 28 acres adjacent to the Kellogg Park, these plans include clear cutting of nearly 20 acres of old growth, magnolias, oak and sweetcom trees, along with the constructing of a walkover through an environmentally sensitive wetland, they also intend to build 53 single-family structures on tiny lots that will be more suitable as rental properties than establishing long-term residencies, thus changing our community and destabilizing our distinctive sense of place. There have been three other meetings where our community has voiced our concerns and disapproval regarding the intended clear cutting of this sensitive habitat. Triton Homes wants to develop without regard to the surrounding neighborhood, we property owners have an expectations of any development to be in line with our established community standards, Triton Homes would have you believe that D.R. Horton Development has set the standard for their development, we property owners have built and currently live within this pristine landscape, consistent with landscape preservation, despite the invil designation, which was arbitrarily designated and misapplied to this area. What this county has preserved is on the line, the Kellogg Preserve, which is adjacent to the proposed development, was given to the county to ensure the public could enjoy the natural beauty of the area. Imagine how 20 clear-cut acres will look adjacent to a county park and preserve, what a stark contrast there will be if this clear cutting is allowed, why on earth would we allow the destruction of this natural resource? The recent county dedication of the Kellogg 10-acre sanctuary will be, when completed, a welcome asset to Walton County, yet it needs substantial support from existing infrastructure, especially when not all of the 10 acres is available to the wildlife due to the county's development of this park. Clear cutting of the adjacent 28 acres will destroy additional habitat, essential for the wildlife to thrive on or near this park, the surrounding habitat is instrumental to the Kellogg Wildlife Sanctuary thriving, and undermines the county's efforts to provide a community resource. The stated goal of the Florida land development is to ensure orderly growth and development while preserving public health, safety and the environment, to protect natural resources and long-term well-being of communities. The decision as to allow this development to go forward will be glaring reflection on how our community standards are upheld. The land use code establishes a goal of conservation of valued resources and community with adjacent properties, this proposed development is inconsistent with our neighborhood as to size of lots, environment, land use and occupancy, and I urge you to deny this development. And if I may continue.
Thank you, sir, um, we've got other people that want to speak too, so.
Please, it'll only take just a brief moment, this is the second attempt we've come before this commission.
Go ahead.
Commission, as you have the power and responsibility to provide continuity with the adjacent properties that will be affected by this proposed development, this proposed development puts our future property values, our valued resources, wetlands, woods and wildlife at stake, all of it hinges on your decision, you're the stewards charged with preserving our resources from destruction, degradation, degradation or by inappropriate development, this decision will shape the appearance of our community and hopefully set forth policies that continue the distinctive sense of place that has been established over many years, I oppose this development, I also have some photos that I'd like to present, please for your review.
Thank you, I do want to remind everyone that this board does have the authority to approve or deny whatever the magistrate determines, so we still have that ability after, after it's gone to the magistrate, this board will have that, that authority, okay?
Thank you, ma'am.
And thank you, and I do believe that we need to work on our tree ordinance, um, we, we've had it, it's kind of never really gotten fully implemented, and we need to make sure that it does, because I agree with you completely, that we need to be keeping these trees, especially the big beautiful oaks and things like that.
The state of Florida is requesting that we plant more trees.
Right.
And here we got a situation, we're destroying a natural resource that's been here for a hundred years and more.
I understand, thank you very much, sir.
Please do the right thing.
Thank you.
I would just remind you, though, that we, as regards any kind of more restrictive tree ordinance, state of Florida through Senate Bill 180 just pretty much preempted us out of that, so, uh, you're gonna have to go to Tallahassee to get that relief.
I understand that, but we can use good judgment regarding this property and how it affects the adjacent properties as well as the park, you know, which you've already, you know, established, you know, as a public good, so please, you know, just because it's written down in stone doesn't mean that we can't make judgments, you know, that better suit the community's needs.
I agree, thank you, sir, thank you very much. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Is there anyone? Yes, Steve.
I have some slides that I've sent you in advance, so if you can pull those up. If not, I have some extra copies I can hand out.
If he's got them, make him pull them up. Can you give her your name?
My name is Young, Steve Young, Young, Y-O-U-N-G. Let's let him pull that up. That makes it easier for everybody to follow. You can go to the second slide. So water quality is a big deal, you know, here. And it's going to become a much bigger issue going forwards. So I'm going to start with talking a little bit about water quality and the role, start with the role of the wetlands. What wetlands do for water quality is three things. Number one, it's a sediment trap, you know? It slows the water down so the fines come out. Two, nutrient removal. This is huge. This is, wetlands act like your kidney. And this is the Department of Environmental Protection, that's where I got these bullet points, and this is their analogy. The kidney cleans the bloodstream, right, from top with toxins. The wetlands do the same thing, takes nutrients, phosphorus, nitrogen, toxins, out of the system so it doesn't go into the bay. The third is storm protection, right? You've got a barrier there. So in this case, you know, this is what wetlands do. We're looking at mostly floodplain. In this case, the floodplain does the exact same, those three things. That's what you have today. All right? Now, the next thing I'm talking about is the, we have a chlorophyll problem, right? The bottom right, the slide, look at those red dots. This report comes from the Choctawatchee Bay Water Chemistry Report dated 5/21/25. You know, and the dots are 27 of the last 36 months. If the water samples, which I'm one of the water samplers that does this, if they exceed the, the DEP requirement, you get a red dot instead of green. Notice, I only did the Walton County side, I didn't do Okaloosa. We've got a lot of red. That means we are at risk, we have a problem. And so chlorophyll, why chlorophyll's an issue? Because it grows a lot of, you can get a algae sludge, right? We haven't had that yet, but we're definitely at risk. Next slide. So there's three options the developer has, you know, and how to develop the property. And let's just talk about how those reside with water quality. First, you know, is the low-impact development. This is in the land development code. I mean, it was authored by Andrea Ward, Christina Schell approved it. You know, it incorporates wetlands into it. So the wetlands will continue to function as they have before. It's recommended by UFIFAS, right? Dr. Evan Bean teaches a stormwater course for us every year, right? That's, he's definitely in favor of no clear cutting, right? It's in our land development code and it's compatible. Clear cutting, clear cutting is absolutely the worst thing that you can do. Once again, Dr. Evan Bean, from a water quality standpoint, because it destroys the ability of the wetlands, or in this case, the floodplain, to work as a, is to, is to clean the water, right? So like your kidneys clean your blood, your stormwater isn't cleaned if you clear cut because you reduce the ability of that water to get absorbed. And once you've destroyed the wetlands or the floodplain, you can't get it back. So what you get, if you look at the picture and the upper, you know, the property's off to the right, see, there's a clear-cut development up on the top. You can see the big scar. So that's what we're doing. We're scarring all of this stuff up so the kidneys, or in this case, can't function. And that is very bad for the environment and our, our wetlands. And then, you know, just in conclusion, you have, the developer has options. He could use a land, a low-impact development, you know, way, but he chose to do a clear cut. Recommend that you don't let them clear cut. That's a terrible thing. And as a group, you here need to, you know, look at clear cutting and that impact on water quality, because y'all are going to be held accountable for some water quality stuff in the future. And then, so I do ask you to reject this proposal and ask them to, they can come back with something else, with a project where they do something that is, that would work with the environment, which would be a low-impact development.
Thank you very much.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Will his slideshow be sent to the magistrate?
We can make sure it does get sent to the magistrate.
And I'd like to get one too, if there's a way that I can get it.
I'd be happy to talk to any of you in more detail about this. On the CB, I do a lot with the Choctawatchee Basin. My other question is really, it's about the magistrate. Do y'all vote here before and then, so the magistrate knows how you voted?
No.
So that's, oh, that's, that's terrible.
No, but once, once they make, once the magistrate makes their decision and, and that comes back to us, we have to agree or disagree. We can approve or disapprove the, whatever they determine.
Okay. So like what Danny said, it's going to be hard to overturn the judge, right? My other question is, does the judge just go from what's legal, so we're just on the total in the development corner? Or does the judge actually take into consideration things like water quality, you know, resident concerns? Or are they just, right here, the law says it's legal, boom, you can do it? Do you know how that works?
You want to answer?
Yes. Judge will receive E.E. Evans' testimony during the hearing and will apply the actual law. There's no different standard than what's currently done before the BCC. It's the same evidentiary standard, just the changes between the board and the magistrate. So there's no change in that standard.
Didn't answer my question, though. Is it, is it fair? You know, is it all like on the, the developer has all of this because they've got the lawyers and the high power? And we, the people, we get...
I hope that's not the situation.
We're, just as a we, the people person, concerned about that and the direction that y'all are going.
One more. I'm sorry.
And to make clear, you, the citizens have the right, they wish to attain their own attorneys and essentially seek interest of party. So they have a right to do that, where you represent themselves as an interested party. That's the same right they have in QJ hearings that have taken pass, taken place for the board in the past there. So I said, there's a real change, there's no change in the evidentiary standard. What can be presented is just, you know, a different person's going to be here and getting there and doing, doing findings of fact and submitting to the board.
That just makes my point, though. You just raised the bar for the citizens and you made it easier for the developers.
Well, I, I want to go back to what Commissioner Gladwell said. We just got our other hand tied behind our back with SB 180. What, what I asked the chair was earlier, why did the planning board deny four to two? And they said compatibility. So that may be what we hone in on for this different project, or what the magistrate may, may hone in on. Is there compatibility? Is there not compatibility? So that's why I wanted, I wanted your slideshow up there to show also other, or other items that will affect this area. So, and, and like Chair John said, it's going to come back to us. I mean, I, I agree with Commissioner Gladwell, but, you know, we are different up here. We, you know, we're all not going to say no at one time, we're all not going to say yes at one time, at, at times. So if, if it's a, if it's a bad idea and it's not compatible and, and all the above, I would say that we're, you know, we're not just going to fall in line with what somebody else said. That's just my opinion. That's just my opinion.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair. I would like to remind you, though, that the United States of America is based on the rule of law. And neither us or a judge or anybody else has the right to go against the law. And if the law says something's allowable, then we're duty-bound to approve it because it's under the law. And we don't have the right to flaunt the law, to just disregard the law and do what we want to do. So, I mean, I, whether it's us or whether it's a judge or whether it's, I mean, whoever it is, we have the duty to the property owner and to the other citizens in this county who, most of are not, are unaffected, to follow the rule of law. And the law has to be applied. Now, I don't have any idea what the law would dictate in this instance, because it's not, I'm not being required to rule on it. But just to say we can disregard the law and do what we want to do, that's, that's not, that's not wise, nor is it legal, nor is it something that we could do. We could get removed from office for that.
Very good. I appreciate those comments and absolutely a fan of the law and upholding the law. I do have, you know, as you know, I have issues with the county on not upholding the law with things like the volcanic deal where they have yet to meet the law or the land development code. But I'll leave that. And I appreciate what you do. Thank you for listening to me.
Thank you very much. I appreciate what you do too. Thank you very much. Yes, sir.
Hey, how are y'all? I'm David Parker and I live at 1647 Indian Woman Road, so right down the street. So, good morning, commissioners. Like I said, my name is David Parker. Let me begin by saying that I have a tremendous amount to lose by standing up in front of y'all. I'm not just a neighbor, I'm the largest private landowner in South Walton. I'm actively planning a significant ecotourism community and I believe it will contribute meaningful, responsible growth to our community. With that said, many of my neighbors oppose today's projects. People I know and respect, ideas that I think are very thoughtful and very respectful of that. But I'm here to speak up for what is legal, what is fair and what is fundamental to our rights as citizens. The ability to use our land in accordance with law. Looking at traffic, I want to, as a personal person that lives there, I've lived there for about seven or eight years, I have done my own traffic study. We've sat at the corner where y'all have the boards, a parking lot at 331 in Chat Holly. I've had my two employees sit at Church Street and sit at 3, or 393. Eighty percent of the traffic that went through there, we're using it as a cut-through. It was not density. It was used to alleviate and go around Highway 98. Twenty-five to thirty percent of them were actually dump trucks. They were avoiding, after I had conversations with them, avoiding DOT. So I would encourage the county to look at putting up four-way stops at Nellie, as we extend Nellie. I would encourage to put another four-way stop up at Indian Woman or somewhere to break up that traffic pattern, to put people back on 98 that can handle that type of load. We aren't in Atlanta, so traffic is, although painful at times during the season, I don't think it's overwhelming. It may be more overwhelming if you were here in 1980 or 1990, but things are changing. We're also looking at autonomous cars, things like that, that will actually help. But also looking at the compatibility issue. I mean, unfortunately, we have trailers, we've got a guy renting 10 different RVs on a one-acre parcel, of which most of my neighbors here have driven by it for years. We collect a hundred dollars in taxes of it. I brought it up to them and many of them have told me that they actually like that because it, it actually discourages development in our area. It's not fair. Density doesn't have a social economic status. It doesn't matter whether it's a $700,000 house or not. You look at the trees, they're all slash pines planted by Santa Rosa Plantation with a semi-amount of magnolias, very little oaks unless they're on the bay itself. But that was a turpentine plantation for, till about the 1950s. So that's the trees that are out there. They're not even longleaf. Can I continue?
Go ahead, yes.
So I think that's the density, that's the trees. We've got people living in 15, people living in one trailer. Those are density problems that we have to address. I don't think 53 homes. I had the opportunity to go to the, to the community meeting. I arrived late, I met Mike and Tricia Lewis, and that's what really this is about to me. This is about protecting their rights. I arrived late, as I walked through the door, I could see the defeat in their face. Both Tricia, Tricia looked at me and said, "Go ahead and bash us like everyone else has." I told them, "No, I'm here to learn about your project and to get to know you as neighbors." Because that's who's selling this. This is not about Treighton. I mean, Treighton's the end user. But these people have the right to actually benefit. And that was the cornerstone, like Mr. Glad, or Commissioner Gladwell was saying, the cornerstone was actually of America was actually, the founding fathers looked at British philosopher John Locke and his life, liberty and property, not the pursuit of happiness, it was actually property. Thomas Jefferson said, "The true foundation of the republic government is the equal right of every citizen in, in his person and his property." James Madison added, "Government is instituted to protect property of every sort. That alone is just government, which impartially secures to every man what is his own." These are the principles of our country, our zoning laws and what it's built on. This property also has a clear public benefit. It will generate over $500,000 annually in new revenue for Walton County without raising taxes to us as citizens. It will create jobs for local tradesmen, carpenters, electricians, framers and other small business owners who rely on steady, responsible growth to feed their families. Put yourself in the Lewis's shoes. You've owned the land for 70 years. You've had offers for twice as much money that they turned down to accept a lesser site plan. Am I correct? A lesser site plan for 53 homes, over 28 acres, when they're zoned for two to eight is neighborhood infill. They could actually do 224 homes. What I suggest to the board is, you may not be sitting here in the next year. Not that I don't want you here, that you may not be sitting here. And it may be a more pro-development. And I appeal to everybody out here the same way, to compromise and to look at different things and see how we can work with developers better. So looking at it, to me, they're looking at, would you take a lesser project if it was your property? Because you have a central right to the zoning that's currently there. And I think that's the main thing that we're looking at here.
I need to wrap it up.
Okay. So basically, I would look at it if I were, you know, in the Lewis's shoes. And also to the county commissioner, you know, appealing to y'all, is that basically, one last page here. What I'd like to say is, is that you're, you're going to make a decision, or the magistrate is going to make a decision, and it's going to look at a potential lawsuit, in my opinion, if we deny their ineligible rights to some of the zoning.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
I'm sorry.
Okay, appreciate it. Thank you very much. Okay, I'm going to ask the rest of you, if you please, would keep your comments at three minutes or less, so that everybody that wants to talk will have an opportunity. I believe the lady straight down under the clock was, had her hand up before. Good morning.
Good morning. Thank you for all that y'all do. We really appreciate it. Name is Barbara Breerwood. Okay? I'm originally from Metairie, Louisiana. And what has happened in Metairie, Louisiana, is they did clear cut all around Lake Ponchatrain. And it polluted Lake Ponchatrain. And this is what is going to happen to Choctawatchee Bay. It is going to be polluted, the wildlife will have nowhere to go. And at some point, this has to stop. It may be legal, but it isn't in the interest of the general public or our surrounding environment. So what I would like to say is, it, it's legal, but it isn't right. It isn't right what is going to happen to Choctawatchee Bay. The county has spent millions of dollars to keep Choctawatchee Bay clean. We will be spending millions of dollars more. I surely hope that y'all are going to be here in a year, because y'all are on the right track to take responsibility and to do the right thing for our county. And I definitely appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you very much. I appreciate you. Yes, sir. On the right-hand side, to my right, straight back. Yes. Good morning.
My name is Jonathan Hallett, H-A-L-L-E-T-T. I have just very small comments here. Planning Board, I've been to a number of meetings and I respect their decision-making process and they voted this down. I support that 100%. and they voted this down. I support that a hundred percent. I expect that you would respect their decision, or why have a planning board? The other thing I heard earlier that the lawyers have already gone and talked to the administrative law judge for a preview, then why can't the public have a preview of the administrative law judge? I think they're paving the way, and they're already starting to influence your, the judge, and I got a problem with that. And as far as this forum, you have a forum here, you have a responsibility to make a decision, and the fact that there are two commissioners not here is, that's, that's not fortunate for some people, but you do need to make a decision, and you have a forum. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Hi, Deborah Townsend, D-O-W-N-S-E-N-D. And I, I live on Garden Lane, just a stone's throw away. I have rights, property rights, too, just like Lewis and Parker. I don't even know if Parker lives or Lewis lives anywhere around here, but we live here, so we have our rights, too. And it just seems that the mature vegetation and the trees are going to be ruined with this project. And concerned about the flooding that's going to occur and the amount of clearcutting that's going to occur, the waters are already contaminated with flesh-eating bacteria. And I've had a neighbor that lives right behind me, right in this area, that had to be hospitalized in Pensacola because of it. So I, I think that we really have to start thinking about what's happening here. There's a, a stretch of Nursery Road of fifty-one homes with the mature vegetation and trees intact, and that's what is needed here in this area. This application for fifty-three homes is going to be double the amount of cars on the road, and that's going to be very difficult to manage, even if we do get those big trucks out on the other roads. Parking in the Chad Holly area has become terrible. At nights, they're parking along the grass on these smaller roads, and you don't always see them because it's dark, and it's, it's, it's not something that's a good idea to continue with. I, I just ask you to do the right thing for our neighbors who are all citizens here, who live here. And yes, the law has their bit, but law sometimes has to be changed, and somewhere it has to start, and I think it needs to start now. But I thank you all for hearing us, and I appreciate your time.
Thank you very much. Unfortunately, to Commissioner Gladwell's comment earlier, there's a new Senate Bill one eighty that is making it tough for us to do what we normally would do. And we're hoping that, that that can get repealed to some degree, you know, before too long.
I agree. And I, I think we need to work on that now.
Absolutely.
And this, this might be the beginning.
Yes. Thank you very, very much. Yes, ma'am.
Hi, Margaret Landry, L-A-N-D-R-Y. And I hear what David has to say. David is a neighbor, and I respect David as well. And you hate to argue with neighbors, certainly. The fact of the matter is, this does not comply with our land development code. Compatibility is a requirement. It's not a, well, maybe you should be compatible with your neighborhood. You absolutely need to be. It is required in the land development code. And I agree, we do have laws for a reason, and we should adhere to those laws. They protect each one of us. So I am not asking for a change. I am asking for the land development code to be adhered to. Trayton Homes compatibility report was done by an engineer. It should have been done by a certified planner who would be more qualified to do this analysis. We hired a certified planner to do an analysis, and we sent it to you. You have all the ways that it does not meet the land development code. I'm not going to go through the whole report. There's a lot of stuff that just doesn't matter at this point because we're going to be hopefully heard again. But I am not, to be clear, and I know there's some developers in this room who will disagree, but I am not against development. As a matter of fact, I reached out to this group a number of times. Good development benefits all of us, but we expect it not to change the character of our neighborhood. There was a different project from twenty-two on this parcel, almost the same layout, but showed more wetlands. I reached out to their team and asked if we could do a wetland study and an abundance of caution. I was told no. Still hoping to work with them on a development that we could support, I reached out again and asked if they would consider a development similar to Seclusion Bay, which is also on the bay near us. Again, I was told no. So, that neighborhood meeting, they may have told you, David, that they got beat up. They did not get beat up. They told us what they were going to do. They said, because of the price of the property, they could, they had no wiggle room with what they could do. This is in a floodplain. It affects our community and should be denied on compatibility, which is required by the land development code. We're not asking for a change. We're not asking for leniency. We're asking for the land development code and the comp plan to be enforced on this piece of property. Thank you.
Margaret, would you please state three of your top reasons that it's not compatible, just for the record?
Oh, gosh, I just.
I didn't mean to put you on the spot.
One are the size of the lots. They are tremendously, significantly smaller than everything around there. The clearcutting. Trayton Homes cherry-picked those compatibles. Two of the three compatibles were developments much further away, and they were D.R. Horton Developments. One is a residential platted development, which is larger. They have half-acre sizes. One had an acre size and was completely vegetated with mature vegetation. And that's the problem. They're not asking for too much density. They're asking to clearcut in an environmentally sensitive area, so.
Okay. Thank you very much. I appreciate you stating that. Thank you. Anyone else? Yes, ma'am.
My name is Jim Davis. I am a nineteen-year resident near the north end of Indian Woman Road. I have neighbors, close neighbors, that are, have interest on both sides of this question. And I'm coming here for a very simple reason of trying to see us all have a better quality of life in our neighborhood. I am certainly not opposed to responsible development, which I consider this to be. I would like to see more proactive, concurrent, ongoing maintenance, which will only come from the county of all the infrastructure in our area, especially to the north side of Nursery Road. That costs money. I don't, I'm not, I haven't tried to dissect the county's budget. I don't know, but I know that these type improvements cost money. Where are we going to get that money if we don't encourage responsible development to increase the tax base? Where's the money coming from? Maybe it has to come from some of the developers. They may have to participate. But I would like to see, I'd like to see bike paths, and I don't ride a bicycle. I'd like to see walking, you know, pathways on all of our streets. Right now, I sometimes walk on Indian Woman Road. I'm risking my life because overgrown rightaways. We have a no-mow zone out there. I don't fully understand the philosophy behind that. If a car is coming, especially if a car's coming both ways, you have to step off into waist-high weeds. They're loaded with chiggers and ticks, snakes, whatever. I'd like to see maintenance of our rightaways. I'd like to see maintenance of the existing drainage. I don't know about all the efforts that are made for flood control, but if we don't maintain our existing drainage, that's inexcusable. I am for this development. I think it'll improve the quality of life for everyone. I think that our property values will be affected more in a positive way. If this development goes ahead, it'll be affected positively, much more than it will be affected negatively due to so-called increased density.
Thank you.
Earlier, someone made some statements talking about the cost and, and our rights as U.S. citizens, our property rights. I think we need to listen to that. Development is going to occur. We're not going to stop development, but let's make it responsible development.
Absolutely.
Let's accept these type proposals.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sir, sir.
Sir, before, that's okay. Go ahead.
Tuesday, we had our budget hearing, because I agree with you, the infrastructure is important. And so this year, we pulled off our, our, in the beginning processes of pulling off a pretty unique set of circumstances. We reduced the millage rate to three-point-five-seven-five, which is the second lowest in the state. But we also put ten million dollars of new infrastructure money. And one of those projects, one of the, the large projects in that list is the Nellie Drive Extension, which we're, I think we're finally going to get under construction, and that will do a lot to help your neighborhood's traffic, because it'll give you a straight shot to Publix and to ninety-eight. But we've got ten million new dollars, and in addition, so there's twenty million total in the budget for new infrastructure. Almost all of that's in District Four and District Five. So, we're, we're starting to right some of the mistakes of the past and, and plus give you a little break on your taxes. But I just wanted you to know, we, we understand the infrastructure, and I understand one of the biggest complaints countywide is about cutting rightaways. But those, to cut rightaways requires mowers and employees, which costs money. So, we're trying to get more and trying to get better, but just bear with us a little bit, because it, it, it does take a lot of money.
One more point I would like to make, if I may. I have a lot of neighbors here. I think several of them are here. They're on Joy Lane. It is a so-called private road, is my understanding, and it doesn't get much, if any, county maintenance. I'd like to see that issue addressed. As these neighborhoods increase in density, I'd like to see us come up with some kind of a mechanism to allow those dirt tracks and poorly maintained roads. I'd like to see them brought up to standard. And who pays for it?
There's a process on, on private roads. It's, it's up to the neighborhood, the HOA, or if they have one, to take care of that, because the county cannot maintain private roads.
I know. I understand that. But I'm saying, that's a problem that.
I don't disagree. I don't disagree with you. I personally am on a private road, and I'd love to be able to do something with it. So I understand. But I also wanted to mention that there is a master plan for sidewalks along a lot of the major roads, and unfortunately, things just take a lot of time. And, but there is a plan in, in motion right now where there will be sidewalks down a lot of the major roads. So I think that we'll see more of that happening. And to Commissioner Gladwell's point, the money that's being put into infrastructure right now. I know a lot of things that we've been waiting on for many, many years are finally coming to fruition. So I think that, that we're moving in the right direction, but it's slow.
Well, I appreciate what you're all doing.
Thank you.
For us.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it. Yes, ma'am.
I need to say my name again. Jacqueline Puglia. So, I just wanted to speak to the gentleman that talked about the pre-development meeting. He admitted he came in late. What I heard, and I was there for the whole meeting, was a lot of residents who were concerned about increasing traffic along that back, especially East Nursery. And as you go across Nellie, I guess it's north, towards Harpstead, okay? East Nursery ends in Harpstead. It's windy, and there's, like the gentleman before me just said, no sidewalks, no bike paths. It's barely a two-lane road. So we have country roads, people walking their dogs, riding their bikes, you know, walking, running, lots of people. And, and now we have all this traffic that's been diverted from Nellie and, and the developments down Nellie. So I think what I heard, anyway, was a lot of my residents, a lot of my fellow neighbors' residents frustrated from the increase in traffic coming from those developments that are going down Nursery and kid on bikes, people walking their jugs. We're jumping out of the streets, because you can't see around those turns. And at nighttime, it's dark country roads. We don't have lights. I think you have to hear from the people who live there what their concerns are. I didn't hear one person. And in all the conversations that I've had with all my neighbors, which has been lots, nearly a hundred, no mention of property value has ever been discussed. So I think it gave this board a completely different complexion of what we're worried about. We're worried about the bay. We're worried about fishing. We're worried about fish. We're worried about winding up like Tampa Bay, polluted, and then the county having to spend not tens of millions, hundreds of millions of dollars to clean up Tampa Bay, okay? And numerous other bays throughout the southeast, Alabama. So, we have Chautauqua Bay, and it is incredibly important to us. And we know our, we know our section of bay. We know Hawtown, Bayou. We know which neighborhoods. And we've got a hundred-year-old Cypress Pond. That's somebody in my neighborhood who can speak too much better than me, but I think it's in one of the ladders. Anyway, it creates a natural habitat for these fish to grow up in and get released out into the bay and to the Gulf.
Thank you. Thank you very much. I appreciate that. Anyone else? Yes, and the lady in the back with her head, her hand up first, but I'm going to ask you to keep to a hard three minutes, please.
Holly Martin, H-O-L-L-Y, M-A-R-T-I-A-N. I'm a resident on East Nursery Road. I live on ten ninety East Nursery Road, or at ten ninety, but I've been asked by Mike and Angela Ragsdale, who are currently traveling and out of the country, to read a letter that they have sent. It says, "Dear Commissioners, on the night of April twenty-ninth, twenty-fourteen, our family lost everything. Heavy rains hit northwest Florida hard that night, and the ground around our home located at ten fifty-three East Nursery Road simply could not absorb any more water. And it was not the bay that flooded into our home. It was the street drainage from East Nursery Road and the surrounding lots. All the neighborhood runoff poured directly onto our yard and through our front door. When we realized what was happening around one a.m., I frantically woke up my wife Angela and our children. We grabbed our dogs and waded through needy water that now permeated every room of our house when we opened the front door. More water surged in around us. We all held hands and waited to our car risking electrocution for both submerged electrical outlets and the terrifying lightning strikes that boomed around us." I'm going to skip the part where they had to find a hotel, and they lost their possessions. The financial and emotional stress of repeatedly moving our family from rental home to rental home over the next two and a half our family from rental home to rental home over the next two and a half years just about destroyed us. The first settlement offer we received from the flood insurance company was $16,000. According to them, most of the damage we found wasn't from the flood that specific night, but was old damage and mold from repeated flooding in the past. But since we couldn't prove that exactly when the damage occurred, they wouldn't pay. I don't need to tell you how far $16,000 goes to replace sheet rock flooring, furniture, and wiring. It took us over a year to squeeze more out of them. And even though we had the maximum home contents coverage possible and had always paid our insurance premium fully on time. I'm writing to very respectfully oppose Project MAJ 25-00036 as currently proposed. While I'm not opposed to responsible development, this project clearly fails the compatibility requirements under the neighborhood infill zoning, which mandate that new developments align with the existing character of the surrounding area. The plan to clear nearly 19 acres and introduce 53 homes, effectively doubling current density, violates both the spirit and the intent of the NI zoning. Their proposed clearcutting also disregards the environmental significance of this low-lying, flood-prone, bayfront parcel, which directly adjoins Kellogg Park. Mature native vegetation plays a critical role in storm water mitigation, habitat preservation, and bay water quality, all of which are essential to our community's economy and ecology. As a family member who has experienced firsthand what happens, we require... We urge you to require a revised plan that includes ample preservation of native vegetation, larger lot sizes, and greater compatibility with our neighborhood."
Thank you very much. I do recall reading that email as well.
I was going to ask, was this the only house affected? And how long ago was that?
2014.
2014.
So have we, as a county, done anything to fix that drainage that caused all this? Is she saying it came off the road?
We spent millions on stormwater improvements all over the South Side.
Has it gotten any better?
We still have flooding. A couple minutes ago, on the Kirby Park, it was 10:15. Nellie and Harpstead. There are several areas that hold water there that are just lower lying. We live almost, which our credit card is free from Mike and Angela, we're the first house on the south side of East Nursery. And we have dug a fringe drain and a ditch that runs adjacent from our property to the baycom block next door, runs out into the city drain that holds water for days.
Okay, okay. Thank you. Go ahead, John. Please keep it to three minutes or less.
Very long, Commissioner.
I now have an ejection button.
On the way here, I asked a friend of mine, I called and said, "Have you got time for a quick story?" And he said, "Yeah, but I've never known you to tell a quick story." So I will be brief. You know, I've only been here for about half the time that this family that owns this property has paid ad valorem taxes on this. I've been here 40 years, and I've seen the pendulum keep swinging back and forth. You'll see the rev... You know, we get everybody up in arms, and it started in West Destin all the way down here. Yes, ma'am?
I'm sorry. Did he give you his name?
Oh, I'm sorry. John King. Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, so I guess the... A point I want to make is the pendulum keeps swinging back and forth. You know, people come up and they think that development is a problem on drainage. I'm sure the engineer's going to speak to... The drainage problems that y'all have inherited are not under the new... They're under old rules. The new rules require... It's a whole different project, and it's a whole different way of dealing with water, filtering, and popping off, and volume of water. Most of these water and flooding issues are not something that has anything to do with a project like this. I'm not defending this project. I don't have a dog in the fight. My only point is the pendulum keeps swinging back and forth. Where we have anti-development commissioners, and then five, eight, 10 years ago, this project could have been 224 homes. Then we got a problem. Nothing works out. But in my view of it is, from a density standpoint, if you're anti-development, anti-increased density, this project is a gift. This is so few cars being dumped out on the road, drainage. I mean, this is a... It's just my perspective that after 40 years, I've seen it swing back and forth. And, you know, if this doesn't get approved, and this family holds this property for another 80 years, like they've held it and paid ad valorem taxes on it, you run the risk of setting it up where we do have 224 homes here. And I don't think that's an appropriate use of the property. But I do think this is... I don't like the design. I think you do a great deal with the entrance. I hope they put a fence on Nursery Road that screens off those people's backyards. I mean, I hope they'll listen to the community on aesthetics. But again, density-wise, this is a gift. Thank you.
Thank you. I would just like to say that I don't think there's one of us commissioners here that are anti-development. I think that we are pro-smart development. So we just want to make sure that it's being done properly. Yes, ma'am? Yes, you. Come on up.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I am Loretta Patricia Pate Lewis.
I am Canda Robson. This is very emotional for me, so please bear with me. I've listened to five different meetings. I've listened to the opposition very loudly. And they have given incorrect information many, many times. My grandparents, George and Amanda Robson, bought this property in 1948. That was nearly 80 years ago. They... And there's not very many people. There may be a few here that can say that they've been here that long. Their family's been here that long. But 80 years is a long time. They lived here until my grandfather passed away after fighting a fire with the Santa Rosa Beach Volunteer Fire Department. My parents lived on this property. With me, I graduated from Freeport High School in 1973. They lived on this property without me. I knew the Old Indian Woman. I knew Chad Holly, Don Bishop, J.D. Miller, and others who have roads named after them. My parents and my grandparents are buried in the Santa Rosa Beach Cemetery. I'm saying this all to you so that you will know that my roots run deep. I'm not a money-grubbing landowner. Although I do not live in Walton County now, I come here at least twice a year. I spend my money here. I rent houses. I do the tourist thing. I have relatives here. Over the years, I've been contracted by many, many developers, but I never felt the right fit, until now. The developers and engineering firm have worked diligently to go above and beyond in meeting all the requirements set by Walton County. We narrowed lot numbers down from 225 to 53 with a 60% open space. If that's not compromise, I don't know what is. It's designed to be family and environmentally friendly. We've provided expert opinions on environment, traffic, and compatibility. We have, in good faith, paid our taxes according to this zoning for almost 80 years. I'm simply asking for your recognition of my vested property rights according to the laws of Walton County. My parents and my grandparents talked about developing this property for many years. Both of my parents were in real estate, especially my mom. But Alzheimer's robbed her of that dream. Homes for families coming to Florida to live their dream. Not multimillion-dollar homes on the waterfront are secondary homes, multimillion-dollar homes on the waterfront. I believe we've compromised above and beyond, and I also believe the opposition will only be satisfied with no development at all. I'm a realist. Families are moving here in record numbers. We can be part of the housing solution, or we can be part of the housing problem. I appreciate very much your consideration in this emotional event for me. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Yes, sir.
My name is Mike Lewis. I'm her husband. I appreciate your time. I know this is a struggle. I know there are a lot of people here today that don't support this project. I know there are several here that do. And it's very emotional for a lot, and I can only think of how this is going to work going forward. There've been many comments made here today that... Well, let me back up. We went through the technical review meeting three times. And that was no fault of the... Really, of anyone, except that we were struggling to get all of the information in in a timely manner. But I gained a lot of respect for Mr. Carpenter during those meetings, because he was very methodical about, "We have all these rules, and you have to meet all these rules." And he said many things that I think were very important. There's been much discussion here today that probably should have happened at the technical review, not here. In the future, I don't know how that's going to work. But clearly, there's a lot of opinions. There's a lot of people that believe this doesn't meet compatibility. We went through that discussion quite a bit at the TRC. He explained how that's supposed to work. He explained how this project... And I'd encourage you, if you hadn't, go back and watch those videos. He explained how this project... And I remember stating very clearly, "As property owners, these people," referring to my wife primarily, "have a right to develop their property if they follow the rules." And they have followed every one of the rules. And the vote was 5-0 coming out of the technical review. And I don't think it would really matter what he said. There were people that didn't like what he said. I understand that. There are a lot of people that don't think this property should be developed. There's only one solution to that, really. And many of the comments act as if this is public property. Well, it's not. The public doesn't pay the tax bill. And I'm sure you know the taxes per acre on this property are much higher than the adjacent properties that are not zoned neighborhood infill. But regardless, the only solution I think that would be acceptable to a lot of these people would be for you to buy the property and just expand the park, because they don't want us to develop it, period. I appreciate your support. I know you have a difficult task. And with that, I'll yield the rest of my time.
Thank you, sir.
Are you offering it to us?
The property?
I will offer it to you. You want to talk?
You can talk to him.
Brian Kellberger. Is there anyone else that would like to speak to this? Yes, ma'am, in the white right here.
Thank you. My name is Mindy Moore, Melinda Moore, and I am a resident of Walton County since 2005. I live in the area that we're talking about. And my biggest concern is the environmental impact that this project will have. It kind of makes me laugh for them to say that this is... They considered the environment in this planning. For them to take 18 acres and clearcut it, that removes the filtration system that was talked about earlier for the existing storm water that collects there already. And to remove that filtration system will double the water, and then to build on top of it will add more of the storm water. And all of this storm water is to be held in this retention pond. Correct me if this is what I learned from the last meeting that I attended, where the developers talked about the retention pond that they were going to use, that's in the plans. But when those retention ponds get full, they have an outflow system that will collect the water and dump it into the bay. And I don't understand how this is environmentally sound and thinking of the environment in any way, shape, or form. I also think that it's insane that this system is to be regulated, maintained, and policed by the HOA itself. So there's nobody other than themselves to determine whether that water is clean enough to go into the bay. And if it isn't clean enough, they didn't quite explain how, what they're going to do with the water that's not clean enough to go in the bay. Where will that go? So if there's any way they could clear that up for me, that'd be great. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Yes.
Good morning, everybody. My name is Alfred Sanders, and I'm the closest person living to this property. I've had it for 15 to 20 years. And I can, if I listen to the side that wants to be able to have more growth and sales, I might want to get rid of my two per acre and have it sung eight per acre. And, you know, but that's not my intent. But I'll just give you a little history. There was a commission 25 years ago, 25... A commission, y'all's commission. And they got up there and they decided they were going to take that part of this property, and they were going to keep it better than the western part. Because when my predecessor tried to get... Have more availability to sell more land, he was told that he was only going to get two per acre, only two per acre. So if you're going to get... I don't care what y'all do, about whether you do it or not. But I do think that the issue here is, that I have the most concern about, is that you're getting a bad deal on this particular sale. And I want to give you...
Can you give it... Can you hand it to her?
No fence, no ditch. I mean, if this goes to where it's headed, you're not getting the benefit when the same company has these houses where they have fences. This is the same company that's handling it, that's going to handle it when it's done. And this is another property that they had. Treton, Florida, is the name of it. Treton, Florida. They did a real good job on 393. They also did a real good job on Chad Holly, if you look at it. But they're not doing a real good job on this particular piece of property. And here's my main objection. On the south... I have the south side of that property. I have it for a quarter mile. The people that came before me had the next quarter mile. And the property on my... I got 10 acres of it, two per acre. And then they set it aside and sold four parcels, four partials. Then on the north side, they only had four original pieces of property. And they cut it... That's on the first 10 acres of, starting at Nursery Road. And so these people... I really agree with what they had to say about having that property for a long time and having the right to sell it. And I'm just saying that... And I'm going to ask the commissioners to get a fair shake on what kind of piece of property is going to go, what's going to happen on that particular piece just across the street from me. You need to have a fence. On my side is all the ditch, so you're not going to have people parking on it. But on the other side, you're going to have no ditch and no fence, as it is today. And maybe I'm thinking that they were going to say... I'm praying that maybe they'll come along and say, "Hey, we're going to do that later and solve the problems." But it's a bad problem when you put a driveway into an area, and then you can either go left or right. And if you go left, you're going to have... There's a total of 11 houses on that strip, on the road, on the road. And so what they want to do is leave a 10-foot, plus, well, they call it a 15-foot, but five of it is a county. And the other 10 is a green area that the people that are in that property can just enjoy it, and you don't have to worry about it. But that has got to be one of the dumbest things I've ever heard in my life. And y'all are entitled to a lot more than that. You want to be riding down Nursery Road and have someone having a rubber swimming pool in their backyard? A dog pen, maybe? A good fire in the backyard? I mean, you've got to have a fence there. And they're not offering it as of this moment, so I don't understand why the heck not. But I'd like to ask y'all's questions about... I'm asking y'all to look at the piece of property that they're... The family... at the piece of property that, that they're, they, the family owns it. The people that are going to buy it and develop it, they're not going to buy it till, you know, they, this comes through and something they're taking a withhold. But you don't, please don't leave Nursery Road on the north side all looking like that because it's, it's going to be an ugly, dirty job right there on the road. And I don't want to take a whole lot of time, but...
Thank you.
I think that, I'm asking y'all to, to get a decent entry, not something you just drive in, and if you look at...
I understand. I have to get you to wrap it up because you doubled your time, and I need to let other people talk. Thank you. Thank you very much. Yes, ma'am. I'm going to ask you to keep it to a hard three minutes or less.
I have time at home.
Okay.
I have some comments, but I'll try to keep it a minute. Okay. Mandy Cooper. My name is Mandy Cooper, and I'm a twenty-four-year-old Walton County resident, and I've lived at 1075 East Nursery Road since 2017. I live directly next door to the Ragsdells', which was the family you just heard about that left in the middle of the night due to flooding. After their home was flooded, they built their new home on pilings. My family and I, on the other hand, live in a home that's at base level elevation. His story is terrifying to me, and I witnessed firsthand how our area is so prone to flood in heavy rains. If you continue to keep taking away our storm water protection by clearcutting these mature trees in these environmentally sensitive areas, you are literally flooding us out of our homes. I am also a local real estate agent and make a living in developed properties. I am not anti-development. I have been doing this for twenty years. I can understand why Treton Homes is requesting to put fifty-three homes on that parcel. It's because that's the only way this deal makes any sense for them to buy it. They cannot work with us by putting fewer homes on this parcel because they're paying too much for the land. That's the basic economics. As a local Realtor, I have access to MLS, and I can see the listing history. The listing history on this property is quite interesting. I'm going to give you a quick rundown of some dates. The property was originally purchased in the forties, remained in the family since the end of April, which the owner just said. I'm told it was a family buyout. It was immediately listed in MLS the next day for a whopping four and a half million dollars. The property has a long listing history over a couple of years, but most recently, the price was increased from five and a half to just under ten million and immediately withdrawn in January of last year. It was put back on the market a month later at the higher ten million dollar price and went immediately pending. I have no way of knowing this, but my guess, as a big city developer, Treton Homes, came sniffing around, and so the price went up over eighty percent. That list, listing history is not really my concern. I only bring it up to say that there is very little capital invested for McCann and Robson LLC. Maybe, just maybe, we can look at the big picture here for everyone. If the purchase price is renegotiated to a more palatable number, Treton Homes can therefore clearcut less of the property, make the parcels larger, which would make them more compatible with the neighborhood, and help keep some of that mature vegetation, which in turn helps keep the neighbors from flooding, all the while, McCann, McCann still makes a substantial profit on this property. McCann, Treton Homes and BCC, I implore you to come together, to come up with a plan that works for everyone. While I understand the highest and best use of this property to the applicant would be to put as many homes on it as you can, but that is not the highest and best use for the rest of the neighborhood, or even for Walton County. Contracts are renegotiated all the time. I have to do it, too. If, if you approve this one, there will be ten others right behind it demanding to have the same thing done to their property. And I, and me and my kids will be the ones leaving in the middle of the night because we've just been flooded out of our homes. I, I just ask for you to consider that. One other thing I want to say, that there are a few people that are in favor of this development, and if you caught that, like I did because I listened, is they are all large parcel owners, okay? They have a vested interest in developing these properties. And again, I'm not anti-development. Just do it in the right way. Cut the price a little bit, make the lots larger so they're more compatible, keep some trees, sell it like Seclusion Bay because that's what selling, not these little cookie cutter homes on these small lots.
Right. Great. Thank you very much. Appreciate that. Thank you. Anyone else? Yes, ma'am. Time out. We need a break. We'll take about a five-minute break.